City Council Committee Meeting to Order. And first item will be Mattie Smith, nominations committee.
We've got a couple boards that have open positions and a few applicants for those. The first one that I would like to bring is the Electrical Board. Our candidate is Jared Hancock. In our packet you see that he currently works at City Electric. He wishes to serve on the Electrical Board. Does anybody have any questions about Jared sitting on the Electrical Board?
Mattie, I'd make a motion to appoint Jared Hancock to the Electrical Board for Place Four.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With that, we'll move forward to with positive recommendation, council, to move Jared Hancock into Place Four on the Electrical Board. The next, it's actually commissioned, it's planning and zoning, we have A2, Alternate Two position open. And our applicant that we have is Bruce De Later. He has served on P and Z before and wishes to serve again. Does anybody have any questions about Bruce serving as Alternate Two on the Planning and Zoning Board? Would anybody like to make a motion for Bruce to serve on?
Mattie, I'd make a motion to appoint, to recommend the appointment of Bruce De Later to Alternate Two on Planning and Zoning Commission.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Awesome, then we'll move forward with positive recommendation for Alternate Two for Bruce De Later. The next board that has a vacancy is the Library Board. We currently have two applicants for the Library Board, one is Lisa Latouche and the other one is Mike Jones. Lisa is currently sitting on P and Z and I believe she is a Chair of P and Z. And we usually don't allow someone to sit on two boards at the same time.
Agreed.
So with that, I'd like to make a record, or I would like to suggest that we move Mike Jones into the Library, Place Three position. Does anybody have any questions about that one?
Mattie, I'd make a motion to appoint Mike Jones to Place Three on the Library Advisory Board to replace Kate Barton.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We'll move forward with positive recommendations for Mike Jones to be on the Library Board, Place Three. And with that, that would be everything on my committee meeting.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Basket, Finance.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to bring up Chief Isbell to discuss the, an interlocal agreement with the City of Midlothian for purchasing EMS supplies.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight, we're requesting approval just of a compulsory interlocal agreement for purchasing with the City of Midlothian. They let bids for EMS supplies some time ago, I think it's been about three years. They've got a five-year contract, which is kind of unusual, but there's a year left on that contract. And we use the same supplier that they awarded the bid to. And the pricing is, it ranks, it's a full catalog of equipment. Everything from needles to bandages to airway equipment. And some pieces are 40% better. We found some that are even 80% better in pricing. And we'd like to just piggyback that contract for the next year. And that's it, be happy to answer any questions.
And am I correct, there's no additional cost to this?
Absolutely, no because.
When you say piggyback, yeah, I mean, we're just going to order along with them, right?
Correct, so in Texas, if we were to let bids or we put out bid specifications for a product and we have vendors, you know, they put in their proposals, we award the bid. Any other government agency, state government agency can do an interlocal agreement with us and then enjoy the same contract without having to go through that process of letting the bids and put the bid specifications together.
Do you know if they have any others, other cities that we did?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
With them?
So, so there's the 34 cities that our EMS representative, the supplier rep deals with. And we are one of two that are on the contract yet. There's multiples in the metroplex that are on it. And we're on several others, we're on some other cooperative bid boards, but I believe we've done interlocal with a couple other cities since I've been here.
Thank you.
Any other questions? It's a pleasure of the committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the interlocal agreement with City of Midlothian contract for medical supplies.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That will move on to full council as a positive recommendation. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the Finance Committee.
Thank you. Mr. Far, Public Health and Safety.
We are willing to consider approval of a Texas A&amp;M Forest Service Grant application, I believe, to replace truck we have.
Correct, so 10 years ago, we entered into an application for a Type Six grass firefighting truck, what we call our TIFMS truck. It's the little white firefighting truck that we have that we deploy in, it's actually deployed today. And it's been 10 years since we've received that truck. And they have a 10-year replacement cycle that we can reapply and they'll give us another one. So as a part of that, we renew our agreement with them, which is, which was in the packet. It's the same agreement that we agreed to 10 years ago and that we operate under today. Again, there would be no cost to us except for we would retain the truck, put it on our insurance, maintain it, just like it was ours.
Does anybody here have any questions for Chief Isbell?
Chief Isbell, if we're approved for this grant, what's the turnaround time on it?
So that, I'm not sure, it, I can, I'll have that for you, for council. But generally, we'll apply and there's a grading that goes with everybody that applies. So across the state, you're going to have a lot of agencies applying for these trucks. Since we've already got one before and we actively deploy quite often and we have a lot of members that have trained with TFS, we get extra credit for that. So I would imagine our chances are quite high. And so as it opens and closes, I would imagine that it would just be like a 90-day type notification and then it might be another six months to a year. I'm not sure on how that, how long it's going to take to get the truck in.
And if we don't get approved, what's the plan?
Well, we still have the truck that we've got that they gave us before and it's still, it's still really functional.
Okay.
So we would have to, we would have to come up with a replacement plan that would be in the future. We would still keep putting in for that truck, though.
So we don't have to return that truck, so that's what's going to be my question?
Correct.
And when would you find out if we're approved?
It would be later this year. I don't think it's going to be that long, probably, I'm thinking in the 90-day range after application.
Any more questions? You have a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the Texas A&amp;M Forest Service Grant Application.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to move forward, council, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just ask for a vote now. Okay. And all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, I'll get that information.
With that, it's 5:39, that's not a record yet. This could have been seven minutes, but it's been the record. But it's 5:39, so we'll stand adjourned for the City Council, work committee meeting and reconvene in the special council meeting. And I'm assuming that you're going to take over this or Gerald? Okay, I just want to make sure Gerald understands that this document is 252 pages long, we're not going to be here 252 minutes.
Well, unless we will only go through 233 pages.
Okay, just do that quickly, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. When we started this process, for those of you who are perhaps new on the council, we started the process in 2023. And the process was started on a comprehensive plan because, one, our comprehensive plan was way out of date and probably wasn't, well, it needed to be totally rewritten. So the idea was to, and by committee and by the groups that were involved in it, is to try to come up with a, a, a different way of doing it, perhaps with a different group to do that. So through the process, we went through to, the selection process, we picked, and the council picked Lionheart Group out of Austin to be the ones to lead us through the, this 2050 Plan, the Comprehensive Plan. Now, why do you do a comprehensive plan? For those who are in the audience and for our fellow members of the council here, you do it because if you don't have a roadmap, any road's going to get you there. You won't know where you're going, but you're going to end up somewhere. The idea behind the Comprehensive Plan is to provide a roadmap of development for the city of Stephenville. And something that the staff can go by, that the council can go by, that our future, when we talk about policies with regard to everything from, from where the roads are going to be to what, to where the developments are going to be to where the water and sewer is going to be. All comes back in to hopefully being a part of the overall plan for development for the community. That's why it was important, why this council was tasked with that job of putting this together. So over a process, a long process, that Abby is going to go over in a few minutes, we went through this process of developing with community input the Comprehensive Plan, our Plan 2050 for the community. So with that, and that's kind of the background of it. This is a undergoing of development services and, and too, so Steve may want to, or Jason may want to add into this. But if it's all right with you, we'd like to ask Abby to come up and make her presentation with regard to the 2050 Comprehensive Plan, which I think you all received a copy of it this week, for sure. And you've seen other copies in, in the past and the final came to, Sarah sent this out. So, so Abby?
Thank you, Mr. Cook. Hi, Abby Gilfillan with Lionheart. It's been a really pleasure working with your community on this plan. And I am going to, let's see, is there a advancer or do I just, just let you know? Okay, go on to the next slide. I'm, I'm going to go through this quickly, you can go to the next one. And I really, I'll be here for questions, if you have any, keep going. First off, as Councilmember Cook mentioned, we started this process in September, or in summer of 2023. We kicked it off right here in this room with a whole series of focus group meetings where we really spent our time just listening. We listened, we took a tour of downtown, we toured around the city with staff. We talked with emergency services professionals and, and downtown folks. And like I said, just really listened, we had social services folks in the room. And what we were trying to do there is really set vision and goals as our first step in the process. Next, we had another sort of big public outreach event where we started to report back what we found. We did a lot of research and analysis as well. We compared Stephenville to some of other benchmark communities. We chose some like Brownwood that were other college towns and we chose other ones close by here like Mineral Wells and compared the towns to each other to sort of look at where, where, where is Stephenville on that, on that metric? Also during this time, we tried to think about what is population growth going to look like for Stephenville over the next, out to 2050 and set some of those numbers. Then we have what we call defining our path forward. And this is where we really started to get creative. Folks came in the room, moved chips around and tried to determine where and how should development look? So where do these new people and this population growth and how does it fit into Stephenville? And then we started talking about implementation, action steps. And we had folks work on prioritizing those, so that's that prioritizing implementation. That started in about winter of, of 2024. And, and here we are at the end, so all together about a nine to 12-month process to get this Comprehensive Plan together. This is sort of our process, we, we spend a lot, we like to spend a lot of time at the beginning really thinking about how do we engage? Who do we engage? And then we go through and do that analysis, then the create, and now here we are, sharing the final deliverable. Keep going, we can go through these pretty quick. We had a really robust advisory committee, that was that first slide there. And we met with the advisory committee several times through this process. We really used the advisory committee to test the document, to test some of our public outreach events, make sure that we were reaching out and reaching the right type of people, stakeholders, to have them, make sure that people could attend the meeting and that we were asking the right questions and focusing on the right things for Stephenville. So this is the list of a lot of the meetings that we went to, keep going. So again, these are just pictures, this is that first meeting where we were all here, the focus group meetings and site visits where we toured around. And these are some of the things that we heard. These are the things that you'll start to see as we talk about the goals that are part of this plan. Things like Tarleton is growing and we should work with the city to ensure its growth is supported by and in partnership with the city. More quality housing, we heard a lot about housing, housing supply, the type of housing, who is housing for? Options for transportation besides all vehicles. So how can we get particularly students at Tarleton to downtown that maybe don't have a car with them? Or to other places or things like that, as a good population to be able to get out of cars. More support for emergency services, more small parks, more activities and recreation within those parks and places for people to hang out and go to within the community. And go to the next slide. So this was this first meeting, we had about 50 attendees. And this one, the other big thing that we talked about is making sure that this plan was something that could be paid for and it was fiscally responsible. And so we had, one of the activities we had was called participatory budgeting where everybody had a certain amount of dollars and put them into different stations. And the thing that came up the most funded category was street maintenance. So really looking at, during that, the, the other thing that we did during this meeting was really talking about population growth. I'll get to those slides coming up in a minute. But the next meeting, this was the one with the chip exercise. This is the one where once we set how many people we think are going to be here by 2050, that ended up with, we said, okay, well, we need to plan for even more than that, right? When you look at a map, you've got to figure out, if you've got this many people coming, you've got to plan for more spots because we don't actually know where they're coming and what properties are going to redevelop. So we came up with a benchmark of about three times, or four times, that, that additional population. So we gave everybody some of these benchmarks, we said you've got, try to fit 41,000 people here within Stephenville. We put the big maps out and everybody moved chips around. And not just where those people go, but also how do they go? So with, are these, are these, you know, is this student housing apartments? Are these single-family neighborhoods? Is it somewhere in between? And so those were all the questions and those were the chips that people were moving around. And that really formed the basis. So you can see we had about, set five tables, I think were part of that. You can see those kind of layered on top of each other. So we took all those chips, we layered them on top of each other and that really formed the basis of the future land use map, which you'll see in a minute. So it was really put together by the, by the community. Going to the next. And then we talked about implementation. And for that, we had over 20 cards that people used and they moved them around on the table as a group to decide which are most important, what resonates most with us in Stephenville. Some of these things are things that y'all are already working on and it was a way to get them into the plan, to coalesce them around common goals and to link them with other projects. Things like the, like again, getting people, you know, from Tarleton down to, to downtown in walking sidewalks, things like that. Also codes, a lot of things came up about development codes and rewriting development codes. One of the things about this plan is that a comprehensive plan is a plan, it's a guiding document, but it's not rules and regulations. So a lot of talk and a lot of the prioritization and implementation strategies revolved around, okay, now how do we back up these, this guidance with actual rules and ordinances? And so you'll see that a lot in the implementation chart that came out. All right, and I'm going to go, it is 280 pages, so you'll see up at the top here, these are where you can find this if you want to look through the document. But these are the goals and these are the, these are sort of the guiding things. This is what we really developed at the beginning of the project. Housing supply was a goal and it's a goal throughout this plan. And not just about housing supply, but also diversity of housing and housing that meets the needs of all ages, abilities, households and income levels. Community character, so this was about, you know, there's a real balance in, in balancing in Stephenville all of the different characters, you've got rural community, you're a regional center, you're a vibrant downtown, you've got university community, and then you've got these really welcoming, great neighborhoods. And so how do you balance all of that and make sure that each of those has a place as well? Mobility, again, enable safe and healthy mobility options. Parks and community services, one of the things that came out is you have this really great city park, but maybe some more smaller parks that are more accessible to people as well as expanding and working on the Boski River Trail. Downtown revitalize, enhance downtown Stephenville. It's really the core focus of the community and really important, thriving, make it an economically thriving place to live, work and visit. And then resilience, resilience was a common theme throughout and recognizing that there are not a lot of resources, but really being able to work with and form those local partnerships, which you guys already do so well, but continuing to do that both with educational, you've got Tarleton, you've got governmental, so you've got, you know, county government that you can partner with as well as Tech Dot, lots of Tech Dot roads. Healthcare, you've got a great hospital right here. Social organizations, so really looking at how do you build on and work with all of those different groups to meet some of these overall community, overarching community goals. And in doing that, you're going to improve fiscal and social health and really support the infrastructure that's needed to support all of those different things. Oops, sorry, next slide. So this is the population, one of the things here, population projections are not a science, but we did use a whole, several different common methodologies for projecting population. We showed those to the community, there's, you can see them up on the, on the board there. As well as the Texas Water Development Board is a regional group that also does population projections. They do it on a more regular basis and they've been doing it for a very long time. After we talked with the community and talked with the advisory committee, we selected to use the, decided to use the growth projections that were, that are, have been published by the Texas Water Development Board as the ones that we would use for this plan. And so that says that you'll have a population of about 32,225.
I just want to make a comment.
Yes.
Alan and I won't be here in 2050, don't worry about that. Don't let us 32,000 people be scared.
Speak for yourself.
Yeah.
I'll only be 96.
He's almost going to be my age here. I had to remind him his birthday's coming up.
What you'll find in here also, I'm not going to read all of these, but you'll find policy statements. You'll probably be hearing Steve talk about these policy statements as he brings projects forward. So that's one of the things about this plan as, once this is adopted, you'll have these new policy statements to really look at and consider as you're considering new development requests. And these are in line with the goals of the Comprehensive Plan. These are kind of the biggest elements of the plan and they're the ones, again, that you'll be using a lot as you're considering whether it's new development requests, capital improvement projects. as you're considering whether it's new development requests, capital improvement projects, large employers coming to town. So, the first one talks about where do you wanna grow? And what this does, I'll, I'll go through each of these maps, but what this really does is it says, where do you have existing infrastructure? And so, where do you wanna support, uh, more growth happening to, um, where that existing infrastructure already is there? So that you can capitalize on that, as opposed to having to build outwards and build more infrastructure. Um, and again, that's that sort of fiscally sustainable approach this comprehensive plan takes all the way through. The next thing there is what, and you have, so that's the growth sectors map. All that does is sort of say, where should you be growing, because there is existing infrastructure or planned infrastructure? The next one is about how, like, what should you be putting there? So, that's where you've got your future land use map, um, you've got your thoroughfare plan map, talks about where the roads go, and then, you've got these targeted employment areas map. And then, the last step is how do we get there? And those are all of the implementation strategies that you'll see at the back of the book. Okay, next slide. Uh, I talked about this already, the growth sectors map. Again, what it does is it talks about, uh, you've got all of, starting from the darkest color is the color where, uh, you wanna direct, uh, the most amount of, that's the high-growth areas. Infrastructure already exists there, uh, so you wanna encourage redevelopment, uh, that's in line with the goals for those activity centers. Uh, the next one is an infill growth sector. Again, infrastructure exists, but you really wanna make sure that new development in these areas is complementary, uh, to what's there. Um, and then, you've got in the S-three, the lightest, the lavender color. Those are areas that maybe infrastructure doesn't exist now, but it might be planned for the future, or you might have some infrastructure, but not others. And so, that's areas where a lot of times you'll see, uh, new development requests come in, and you really wanna control that growth to make sure that, as the infrastructure that's built for that growth comes in, that you're able to fiscally and financially support it in the long run, um, as a community. And so, that's where that controlled growth comes in. Next. Future land use map, this one starts to talk about, again, how does that growth occur? You've got some centers, those are the ones in red. Um, you'll see particularly some centers around Tarleton State University. There was a lot of conversation and a lot of talk about, uh, student housing, and, uh, that concept of purpose-built student housing. These were the areas that the community said, you know, felt, uh, uh, really like a good place to put some of that purpose-built student housing. Purpose-built student housing is the, you know, the apartments that are really primarily built for the purpose of housing students, so kind of that private dorms. And then, you've got, um, uh, what's called community core. Uh, so, this is an area that, uh, you would see, um, you know, a little bit more dense residential, but it's housing that's generally should be able, available to, to all, so not necessarily purpose-built. You might have some, but, but typically, you wanna see that, that type of housing that anybody can, anybody can live there. It's all different types of housing. Uh, you'll also have commercial in those areas, uh, neighborhood services, things like that. And then, you've got the lighter yellow color, um, and that's complete neighborhood. Um, you'll see that both for areas that are new development. So, you might have, um, there's areas there that, that don't already have housing, and there's some that do in the areas where you've already got housing. Again, you wanna see infill development, but you want it to be complementary to what's there. Uh, going to the next slide. And then, this is the transportation or thoroughfare plan map. One of the big things you'll cha- see in here in terms of a change, uh, from your current thoroughfare plan map is there are a lot fewer roads, particularly outside, as you get, you know, to the, to the ETJ area that are planned for the future. Um, and that's because we're really wanting to focus, again, on the roads that you already have, in- increasing, uh, the throughput, making sure that those are kept in good condition, um, and focusing on some of the major loop system, uh, to alleviate, uh, regional traffic. Those are the things that you're gonna partner with TexDOT, other agencies on the county, um, on implementing. But, but this real focus on, on moving traffic, uh, within the city. Next. And then, these are the targeted employment areas. These are areas where you might wanna consider, you know, not having a, a full single-family subdivision or something like that, that might conflict in the future, uh, with some large, um, employment-type uses. Uh, so, these are areas that do have great regional connectivity already, um, and they also, uh, if they don't have infrastructure, you're wanting to make sure that they've got the water and wastewater infrastructure to support, uh, that targeted employment they're looking for in those areas. And then, getting to the, the, the end of the report, where we start getting to that, um, implementation. What you'll see in this implementation roadmap, you've got, uh, several different pages of, uh, uh, you'll have a overall kind of goal, and then, you'll have several action steps to achieve that goal. So, uh, we tried to really break it down and give some specific actions and steps. Again, those are the things that community was kind of pushing, uh, cards around on the table to prioritize. And those action steps come in the form of projects. So, it could be, uh, an actual physical project, like put a sidewalk here, or a bike path, or whatever it may be. Um, it could be a program, it could be a, you know, uh, an economic development-type program or something like that. Or it could be a policy, like a new development code. Um, so, you'll see those broken down, um, as activities. We also sort of break down and talk about, you know, uh, are these, are these ones that you wanna tackle in the short term, midterm, long term? What level of investment goes along with each? Are there any funding tools that are available and out there now? What types of partnerships are maybe already exist, maybe you're already, again, several of these things are already things that you're working on? And then, what kind of goals are they tied to? So, if you wanna go, this is what that implementation, uh, page looks like. Again, the recommendation, kind of broad level recommendation, a description of that, some specific action steps, uh, that you can start taking. You know, when would you start that short, mid, long-term type of thing? Level of investment, who are some, who are your partners, funding tools, those sorts of things? So, you've got a real roadmap there, uh, for implementation, so you can start checking some of those things off. And I think that's all I've got, so I'm here for questions, or?
Questions?
Comments?
Any recommendations from the committee, from the council?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I, uh, would move that the, that we approve ordinance number twenty-two-four dash zero dash?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, which is an ordinance adopting, uh, the City of Stephenville Twenty-Fifty Comprehensive Plan and declaring the effective date.
Here a motion, here a second.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. You did a really good job.
Thank you.
You teach Daryl Brown how, I mean, it's just. You did a really good job, thank you, man. Appreciate what you did, guys.
Thank you.
Time to hear that? There you go. Any other on this, on the agenda?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Mr. Kellen? You ready, you ready to get out of here, huh?
Just wanna say, uh, they've been a great group to work with, and I've really enjoyed working with her and Rebecca and, and their team, that's Abby Gilfillan. I've known her for, going on two years now, and I still don't remember how to say her name a lot of times. Uh, great, great job they've done, uh, putting this together. It's gonna be a, a huge paradigm shift, as we've been saying for, uh, many, many months. Uh, but I think we're, we'll get there, um, but there's a lot of work ahead, so, um, great vision by the council to award the funds and, and push us to this Twenty-Fifty plan. Uh, lots of people contributed, um, advisory panels, community groups, um, city staff, and of course, you guys have been all, all along the way. So, just thank you to everyone, and appreciate it being part of it. That's it.
Appreciate your leadership, Abby, thank you for your hard work, appreciate you. Anything else?
I read none, it is six oh four.
And the city council meeting will stand adjourned.